And everyone please stand and tell the planning commission we need to order for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Row call please.
Edward Keller.
Here.
Why do you sign in?
Excellent excuse.
Christine Holcomb here. Harold Bane.
Here.
Mark Borshart.
Here.
Tom Cozel.
Here.
Robert Muesling.
Here.
Keith Bell.
Here.
Kathy Schweitzer.
Here, thank you.
Item number four is amendments to agenda.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to remove the site plan review for 5359 Point Tremble, 14-424-0112-000, expansion from tonight's agenda per the request of the applicant.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. Any other amendments to the agenda? Very none. Item number five, approval of minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from November 13th, 2019 as presented.
Support.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minister of Approve. Item number six, there's now three remaining items under new business, which is B, C, and D. Letter B is public hearing for 7317 Dyke Road, which is a continuation of a public hearing that we've been dealing with, and I would reopen the public hearing as-
Madam Chair, before we move on to that, I would respectfully ask to be recused from this portion of the meeting.
Okay. Everybody okay with that?
Okay.
I believe we'll need a motion and a vote.
We need a motion by somebody.
To allow it.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to allow Keith Bell to recuse himself from the continued public hearing.
Second.
Why don't you well call him now?
Sure.
Just do it on the back.
Keith Bell?
Yes.
Edward Keller?
Yes.
Why do you sign? Christine Holcomb, yes. Harold Bane?
Yes.
Mark Borshart?
Yes.
Tom Cozel?
Yes.
Robert Muesling?
Yes.
Kathy Schweitzer?
Yes, thank you. We'll come get you when we get to the next section, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. I will now reopen the public hearing. It's like 7:04, so I would ask our planners if you have any further to add to this.
Good evening. We have just a brief update of our presentation that I'm going to go through. So, we're going to start with, I think we all know the project location. This was the aerial we showed last time, which is a more recent aerial photograph of the subject property. This is one back from 2017. See what the difference in water elevations, how it impacts the land area. This is 2014, obviously with much more activity in the water when this particular aerial image was taken. And then this is 2011. You can also see how the water levels have impacted the size of the island over time. This is the zoning. I think we went over this last time, but just to refresh everybody's memory, this property is zone C3, general business. There is R1, one family residential to the north and the south. There's C3 to the east, as well as R4 on the other side of Dyke Road. Access to this property is via one point of access, and the applicant is proposing to make improvements to, which is included in the plan. This is the current situation in terms of access and what it looks like today, or within the last year or so. So, what is before you this evening is a request for special land use and site plan approval. There's a couple of, there's a number of different uses that are included in the applicant's request. One is a restaurant that can accommodate 134 people. One is a transient marina. They are showing approximately 114 boats with the rafting proposal. If you were to have just one line of boats roughly with the same configuration, you'd get about 43. There's just over 1,600 linear feet of shoreline. There's also a future bathhouse that is shown on the plan, but we don't have all the details on that, on that bathhouse. There's outdoor dining and live entertainment. That's part of the special land use component, the outdoor activities. There is a pool area with 223 people in terms of maximum capacity if the restaurant is open. If the restaurant is closed, the applicant is proposing that that area would have a maximum capacity of 424 people. And then there's also an event area that has the capacity for 424 people as well. And the applicant has indicated that obviously the two areas would not be open at the same time if one is maxed out. If you can't go beyond the 424 based upon the parking that is being proposed. And then these are the dimensional requirements with the setbacks. We've gone over this. Not much has really changed here over previous discussions. This is the updated overall site plan. This is the little bit of a, kind of a closer in view to the north end. The applicant's recently submitted a boat parking plan, and it states that there will be no boat parking on the north shore. Along the east and other shorelines, you can see in the applicant, in our letter as well as in their application, there is proposal to have areas for boats to dock and to participate in the proposed activities that are included. Army Corps of Engineers has requested that signs be posted at 50-foot intervals along the dock, along the north channel stating no boat parking. And in the event that you choose to approve rafting of boats, they are also requesting that signs be proposed along the other shorelines where that would occur, indicating that rafting cannot extend more than 30 feet from the shoreline. And then this is a close up view of the southeast end of the property. This is the restaurant and pool area. And this is the floor plan for the restaurant. Another quote from the Corps of Engineers in their review, "The Corps does not have the manpower or resources to constantly monitor and follow up on how and where boats are temporarily moored. Ultimately, the effectiveness of sign conditions would depend upon the permit's adherence to the limitations. Other governmental entities such as planning commissions or marine patrols may be able to enforce boat traffic or, and mooring control." So, just putting you on notice that if you're concerned about what you've seen in the Army Corps comments, it's important that if you move forward with the approval of that component, that you would want to make sure that conditions are in that approval that would help to enforce and make sure that the concerns and the conditions of the Army Corps are included in your action so that you also have the ability to enforce those because the Army Corps has indicated they have limited resources and really would not be in a position to enforce any of these types of restrictions. Also, as we've noted before, this area is part of some existing St. Clair Blueways kayak trails. We went over this at the last meeting, and that involves traversing the north and the east side of the island in particular, as folks can use that to access these routes. Terms of parking requirements, this is a highlight from our letter, and as you're aware, the applicant is requesting the maximum 25 percent waiver for reducing the actual vehicular parking in favor of providing for areas for boats to temporarily moor, and based on the applicant's proposal that they believe that a substantial number of persons visiting this particular site will come by boat. And so, they're asking for you to grant the maximum 25 percent waiver of required parking requirements, required parking spaces. Also, we note that the applicant is asking that the parking requirement in your zoning ordinance for marinas not apply to this. They have indicated they believe this is not going to function like a traditional marina. They are proposing overnight stays. So, the applicant is asking once again that that be waived and that there be no consideration because of the unique nature of the marina. They're asking that you not require parking. So, that's something that you'll need to consider as part of your deliberations whether or not you feel that the marina would in fact generate parking spaces. As proposed, the marina would require 57 parking spaces per the ordinance if you applied the standard marina parking requirement to what is being proposed. And then also interior parking lot design, there are a few areas that don't appear to meet the minimum 10-foot width requirement for green spaces. Depending on the configuration, that might require action by the ZDA or consideration by the, by the planning commission because that is an ordinance requirement. The applicant is proposing that the uses will function with two different parking seasons, basically an off-season and an on-season. The off-season being from November 1st to May 1st, where the restaurant would only be in operation for the most part. So, you'd have 67 spaces required versus 106 provided, which complies. In the on-season, from May to November 1st, 142 are required versus 142 provided. This would comply if you grant the full waiver and you also accept all of the assumptions that the applicant is asking you to assume regarding all the other parking requirements. And so, that's part of a larger bundle that is part of your consideration this evening. And then in terms of waivers requested, transient marina, 35 spaces, which is equal to 25 percent of the 142 required spaces, okay? So, that's part of, part of the request. And then obviously, what I already mentioned, the marina and determining whether parking is required for that. You do have special land use standards that are in your ordinance. These are standards that should be reviewed as you make a determination as to whether or not the special land use permit should be granted. And then also, you have site plan review standards, which we're not going to go into detail as well, but those are also standards that should be considered. So, tonight, the next steps would be, obviously, to, you'd hear from the applicant, you'd hear from the public, as this is a continuation of the public hearing. And then in terms of planning commission items for discussion, addressing some of the discrepancies on the submitted plans and the boat, boat parking, I just want to clarify, it appears that there's no parking proposed on the north shore, but we did see a couple of boats shown on there. I just wanted to make sure that that's, that's clear, that they are not proposing any, any parking on the north shore. Hours of operation, maximum permitted stay for the transient marina. Does the overnight stay trigger marina operations? Is that something you want to approve? Now, that's something that is part of your special land use consideration. Do you believe it's appropriate for overnight stays? Is there a limit to the number of days or nights that overnight stays would, would be allowed to occur? So, that's something for consideration. Hours of operation of the outdoor dining and the outdoor live entertainment, the restaurant pool area, the tents. Applicant is proposing, is giving you their operating hours proposed. Are you going to accept those, or do you believe something different is appropriate? Parking waivers and impact of the special land use, we talked about that. The seasonal variations in the required parking, parking lot paving timeline and bond. And just so you know, they have to pave the parking lot per your ordinance. There is something built into your ordinance that if you get to the end of the construction season and you can't get it done, potentially you could have a six-month extension. But if they want something beyond that, that would be up to the zoning board of appeals to grant anything beyond what the ordinance requires. Looking at your special land use standards and your site plan review standards, which we've mentioned briefly, the traffic impact assessment comments, boat safety, Army Corps of Engineers permit, do you feel like you've got all the information you need? The applicant has provided responses to questions that were posed by the planning commission, and that is in your packet. And then input from the township engineer regarding stormwater runoff. I know you've had some preliminary input. Typically with any site plan, it would go through final review, and ultimately, if it's, if it's approved, it would get a final check at, at final site plan approval for the detailed engineering requirements. So, we recommend that the following items be discussed by the planning commission. I think these are all, pretty much we've gone through these. I don't need to go through, they're, they're pretty much similar to what was on the previous slide. In terms of potential action, once the planning commission has discussed the information, there's a number of options that you have, and the first one would be to approve the special land use application and the site plan as presented with no conditions except that the parking be provided per the zoning ordinance. So, that, that's certainly one option. That's what the applicant is requesting that you do. Another option is to approve the site plan for the restaurant only as presented with no conditions except for the paving or the parking, and that the site plan would be modified to remove any of the special land use, uses from that site plan because you would only be approving the restaurant. And then there's a number of other iterations somewhere in between those that are possibilities. For example, approve special land use and site plan as presented, but limit the capacity of the tented event area and the outdoor pool area to a specified lesser amount, and then reevaluate the capacity after one full year of operation. If you have concerns about the parking, if you have concerns about the boat activity, one option would be to approve something less than what the applicant is requesting and then reevaluate it after it functions for a year to see if it's functioning the way it was intended to function, and then potentially allow greater occupancy after that year review. Approve special land use and site plan as presented, but limit the number of tented events and outdoor pool area events to a specific number of events per season and reevaluate, giving the applicant a chance to actually max out the site as they've proposed, but only do it a certain number of times per year and then see how that works, reevaluate it after one year of full operation. Approve the restaurant and the pool patio area only and approve the marina with no overnight use and not approve the tented areas. So, that's, that's another option. Approve the restaurant and the tented event area only and not approve the pool entertainment area. Approve all special land uses and principal uses and then limit the hours of operation of the outdoor activities, or approve all special land uses and principal uses and limit or prohibit overnight stays by boats and by vehicles, not allowing them to occur overnight. And then you could add other conditions or limitations as you see fit. You could table or postpone the, the application, or you could deny the application. So, those are a number of different possibilities, keeping in mind that the restaurant is a principal permitted use, so if the, if the restaurant meets all the requirements of your ordinance, it must be approved because it's not a discretionary decision. The outdoor patio, the entertainment areas, the tented areas, the pool area, those are all special land uses. Those are up to a discretionary decision of the planning commission based on consideration of your special land use standards. And then related to the marina uses is whether the outdoor parking is required for this use per the zoning ordinance, as we've mentioned. So, that's a summary of the update that we have for you, and I'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
Thank you. I would now ask if the applicants have any further information they want to give to us?
Yes.
We got our PowerPoint presentation here.
So, we get started. Sort of as Rod said, a lot of this stuff you guys have seen before, nothing has changed on this page. The overview of our consultants are basically our, our team that's been consulting with us and helping us through this process. These, these all still remain as helping us through this process. What has changed, it's been pretty slow, really a short time. The planning commission's offered the 42 questions. We responded to those 42 questions. We were requested to resubmit application and a site plan. We did so. We had an off-site meeting. We answered some questions. It was a brief meeting, basically, just, we were reviewing those 42 questions, and we're in the process of responding to those questions. So, we've seen those response. Outside of that, we've, we've just, we finished about 600 feet of seawall, and that's still under that permit, and that's still going forward. I think there was some concern about dredging. There's no dredging. It's just still pounding sheet, sheet stealing right now. You know, we kind of went through, we've seen the responses from the planners, and basically how it reads is the top is what was responded from the, the comments supplied by them, and then some bullet points of us coming back. I mean, there were some questions here, concerns about the nature of the transient marina, set conditions related to maximum hours, days stayed, overnight occurrences. You know, one thing we really want to be associated with is a trend, is a boating destination, a transient boating destination overnight, similar to a North Channel yacht club, which is, on their own website says is historically a destination of club located, of course, familiar with that, the Fort Island. You know, our main difference is we want to be open to the public. We don't want to be a private club. We want to be open to the public that allows the same type of transient boaters to come in and spend the night, spend the weekend. Back to number two there, we're not, we're not defined marina in a traditional sense, that facility storing and servicing and fueling. We won't be launching boats. We're not, we're not a full-service marina of any type. We don't have no intention of storing boats on the property and/or servicing boats or servicing as a typical marina would. We talked about guests coming in by boat or by car, and the concern obviously is, is we think, will guests join people on boats? Of course they will. We think that's, it's happened, it will happen. But if a, if a boater has a boat, a guest comes to arrive, it goes against our 106 parking spots. It'd be considered a guest of the, of the facility, of the restaurant. And we'd like to see that no additional parking speeds needed for that boat that comes in. It'll be against our parking as it would be considered a guest of the, of the venue.
You know, I think the one key point too about being defined as a marina, you know, and based on what was in the planner's packet, you know, a facility for storing, servicing, fueling, birthing, and securing boats, but they also launch boats, boat sales, we're not doing any of that. We don't have boat wells, you know, we're not doing seasonal boating. So, we're not a traditional marina, you know, we're more of overnight stays, things like that is what we're looking at. If guests want to come into the property for a wedding event of some sort, and they're staying on their boats overnight, what we're looking at is, you know, we don't want to, you know, kick them out, you know, at 11 o'clock at night and have them going down past start drive, you know, after, after the wedding's over. So, we don't feel that we are a marina. We have boat parking spaces, and we don't feel that the people who are coming to our island by boat are going to bring their car. So, we don't need to tie up a car spot based on the marina's ordinance of one car for every two boats.
And then the overnight, as Kate, we talked about, may occur. We again request it doesn't have an impact on our parking as we're not a marina, and docking is just transient, not seasonal. So, some of those things, I realize ordinances are written, and you try to encompass everything when you write in ordinances, and I just think we're just outside of that, just the nature of the business, just a bit outside of what a traditional marina is versus a transient. So, we want that to consider it, put part of our consideration as, as review that.
And you guys are familiar with the North Channel Yacht Club and what they're doing, weddings and things like that. And the people, they don't have a parking lot on their island. They have an off-site little spot that people can boat across. But basically, you know, what we're doing is, people will come and stay and leave, not bring their car.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a, there's a few transient marinas in the area and on our lakes, so just as one that's close, close to, close to where we're at in the same vicinity. We talked about the parking. Planners covered that. This is same, same conditions. Some of our bullet points are, you know, this is a reduced map. There were some other maps. I think there were some concerns about those boats and the traveling up in the north and then in the east. We used one as a, as a kind of a model. We used the same boat that's stored. We knew the size of it, and we kind of used that image. It was a, the Army Corps wanted other, outside, wanted outside of an engineering drawing. They wanted to see like a physical picture, map type of thing. So, we created this for them. We, we saw some earlier versions, had, had more boats on the north shore, and then obviously they had concerns, we had concerns traveling. We understand that's tight in there. We had hoped to pull that back another 10 or 15 feet and put steel in there. They, the Army Corps did not want to make that canal larger, so we just agreed to leave it as is and put a, and put no parking on that north shore.
So, there's been quite a restriction, you know, in terms of losing that north shore parking. You know, it's our land, you know, and we're not parking boats there. In addition to that, we've given up where we were 40 feet out into the canal side on the east side, we've given up 25 percent, which is 10 feet, along that shore where we're not docking there. So, we restricted ourselves on the north shore, restricted ourselves on the east shore already to meet the Army Corps' objections or whatever concerns they might have had based on input from the community. So, we feel that we're actually widening the channel there because we're not sticking out as far.
And then as, as you stated, we'd agree to the signs and the postings, both for the 30-foot, at the 50-foot intervals on the, no parking on the north end, and the seawalls for rafting off. And we just kind of agreed on a, all boats are different sizes. We were at 40 feet, we agreed to scale it back to 30 feet for that, which would also widen, widen that canal. I guess in, in, in respect to put it in wells or, or leaving the wells that were there. Of course, we submitted the full license that the Army Corps goes into some pretty good detail as far as that license is concerned. I think it's 40 some pages, but, but there's obviously, that's submitted, so if you're around to read more detail on that, it's there. Well, in the final, we're just asking for no additional restrictions. Again, this map is based on max, max capacity. What can you show us? The Army Corps wanted to see where would you put these boats and how would they look? So, we just presented something to them, and then that's where we ended up. So, it's a max capacity, and we really don't see boats rafting like this unless there's a, you know, a special occasion or, you know, holiday weekend or something.
But it's still well within what, what our, our bottom land ownership, we own the bottom lands on that east canal out past that 40 feet.
The next concern was the number of days and the operations, and again, planner's concern at the top. We go to our points regards to that was, you know, we're already obviously a seasonal business when it comes to the outdoor event areas. We're restricted by 26 weeks. We're going to be restricted by weather concerns for just normal operations. You know, we talked about our operations. We, we addressed that on the 42 questions, and again, in our application updates. And a lot of the control will come from the Michigan Liquor Control. They, they control your hours of operation, especially on the, on the later hours. Our acoustics consultants came through, provided our detailed computer-generated models that showed that volume and where it projected to the border, border property lines. They also looked at the, the sound levels at M29, which exceed that level of what we produce, given that the, what was it, 93 decibels or 100? Yeah, 95 decibels, whatever it was, it's in that, it's in that permit, so, or in that application. And then, so, you know, we feel that our, our plan here meets the sound, lighting ordinances, and we propose no additional restrictions on that outdoor.
Right. You know, we're, we're basically on an island. We've done the computer-generated sound study. It shows that our noise levels to start drive, based on where we're located, it's less than 50-some decibels, which is the sound of a quiet dishwasher at 3 feet, based on the computer gen- based on the computer-generated models being a thousand feet away. I was out there this last week when we were moving that big crane out and off the property that's been there, the red crane. And they had both engines going and they were pounding on some pipes. And I was down on the North Shore and I could, I could not really hear that much of what was going on until I came around the corner and came back up. So distance does affect the noise and especially directional distance. So this was just going all in around bout versus where we're going to be set up, pointing out not towards the houses.
And there were some concerns that residents had about that Munchies Bay area being, being, being a loud area and also incorporated our, our area. If we were at ninety-five decibels, we produce on that shoreline fifty-four decibels. If they were to match that fifty-four decibels, it, it doesn't double in size. It would go up like three decibels. Even if we were both seventy decibels, it would be seventy-three decibels. So it, it doesn't double in sound just because it, it carries that way. We, we talked to consultants about that and some of the questions that, that may come up later regards to sound. And, and if there are more questions, those guys are pretty, pretty happy to help us with those. The next question regards to marina slips. Again, we propose standard marina ordinance do not apply. It's a, it's a unique nature of what we're proposing is operations. And we're not a marina, boating destination overnight dockage. And again, tying up the fifty-seven spots for boats, we think it's redundant. It's unnecessary. We don't think it follows in the spirits of the ordinance. The spirit of, of the ordinance is based on the fact that there's really not a transient docking set of ordinances that we can, that, that fits our, fits our model. Again, we, we talked about the boats again, the cars. We don't think boaters are going to bring cars and, and stay like a typical marina would. We think that boaters are going to leave their home or their, or their marina and, and come to our, our spot.
But we do think that some people will show up because their friends are there by boat. So they will come by car. But those people that do come by car will be guests of the restaurant. Or, you know, if they're just coming in and they want to bring a whole case of beer and jump out of boat, you know, that's not something that we're interested in. That doesn't help us. We, we will need to police that and make sure that customers coming in, they can say hi to their friends. We want to encourage that. But, you know, they're going to need to come into the restaurant, things like that. So we don't feel that the people who are coming by boat are going to bring their car. Some of their friends might show up, but that's a customer of the restaurant. So that's why we don't want to double count this fifty-seven additional spaces away from our one-hundred-and-six for, you know, have spaces sitting there that are not being used by the boater.
And, and I, and I do it too. I mean, I go to where friends are boating and we come up, they are boating. We've got a boat here, Cruze Inn, our bumpers, wherever they're at. And I'm driving home from work. I said, well, I'll stop in and see you. You know, I'm not bringing my boat over there. But, you know, it's, it does happen. People have boats, their friends come to join them. I think we're going to have some of that. But again, just as those restaurants, my cars in their parking lot, I would count to their capacity of their lots, you know. You know, this, this, we've already seen this. This is the same, this is the same that the planner's posted. It's the same numbers. And, you know, really what it, it comes down to is that we're, we are asking for that parking waiver at the twenty-five percent, which is, which is the maximum that the planning board can approve for the lots that are, spots that are required.
And I think that twenty-five percent amount of thirty-six boats is a, as we all know, is a pretty small number based on how many boats can you get into Browns or something like that? Thirty-six boats, you know, is not a lot of boats for approximately sixteen-hundred foot of seawall.
This is the same flag. We talked about this last, last, at our last meeting. You know, we, we do anticipate being able to do that paving within that six-month period, depending when we start and when we finish. You know, we really want that ground to settle. So we, we will be putting a construction road in, of course, right away so we can start settling that ground. But again, we, we'd like to move forward with that and not have a big hefty bond over our head to finish that, to finish that.
Putting in the seawall, you know, the tiebacks are twenty-foot off. They're digging up the dirt down to put the tieback in and the anchor. And basically that dirt's all been disturbed. Now it's got to settle down. Then we got to put, you know, one by three on top, drive over it, put some more on top, keep compacting it. And, you know, we don't want to pave over the top of that, you know, because there's going to be settling after being disrupted after, after so many years.
This is the parking lot landscaping. I, I, it was in your, it's in the documents, both from us and the planners. The, the numbers tweaked a little bit. I, I, I know we've looked at that, are pretty close. I think they, they're saying that three oh, two thousand, three oh five is required. We said three oh six. So it's not very, one, one square foot larger, we're saying. But anyway, we meet the requirement as far as the in, in lot. There are some discrepancies. We agree with it. We, we curve in for entrances and stuff, so it may not be ten-foot square. But we meet the square footage of the requirements.
We're actually over the square footage.
It's over, yeah.
So we're over the required square footage for the ordinance. But in terms of what the planners are saying is that, you know, some, some things that should need to be ten-foot or nine-foot in this location, but there's more somewhere else. So it has been said several times in the meeting. I think Matt has said that, that, that we are over on our total amount.
Yeah, that, that was an argument. It was, it was just kind of a set that, you know, is what we're proposing satisfies the intent of the ordinance? Is that satisfied the planner's idea of that internal landscaping? So that's kind of where we're at in that. That hasn't changed, I don't think, at all since the, I believe. The external, there was some confusion on the external. The planners in that, in that section, the planners had talked about a two-hundred-thousand square foot. And we were, when we did our DEQ permit, they were using the entire square footage of the island where the, where it was. And we were also including the native plants. DEQ is pretty big about getting those frags out. And we've been spraying for those. Get that removed and let natural plants grow and/or plant native plants. They originally asked us to plant native plants. And now that they've come back and said, well, they prefer to let native plants grow in its place. That would naturally be there just from nature. So we, we included that in those numbers. It was a bit confusing on that. The actual development site per our engineering was, was a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred. So two percent is twenty-six, ten is required. And we, we provided twenty-six, eleven, a square foot. So that number was cleaned up because it was a bit confusing on, on the narrative that was turned in.
And the reason for the two-hundred-thousand square feet, you know, that had to basically sound about five acres, which is the DEQ planned back before the water levels all raised on us. So we were looking at about five acre, but one acre was wetlands. So really it's four acres of uplands. So the two-hundred-thousand included one acre of wetlands. But now with the water raised, that number's smaller than that even. So that's where the confusion came in because we had numbers that we were working with them versus a developed number that we're doing in terms of we're not developing the entire property. The area that we're developing, we're meeting the two percent requirement.
We show a map of that.
We want to make sure that, you know, that we hit the number.
So it's kind of difficult to see, but this is basically developing from here down. You can kind of see also this darkened area is the wetlands. That we're going to try to get rid of those frags and have the natural, native plants growing. And then, of course, the parking lot landscaping, the landscaping around the building and the landscaping around the equipment. Our engineering believes that meets the spec of the ordinances. The, the sign, we've talked a little bit about this in, I believe, in our forty-two questions that we answered. The idea would be upgrading the, the current sign that's there. The sign is clearly marked on our, on our site plan, I think, I believe in three or four spots. It's an existing sign on the property. We've allowed the neighbors to keep the signs up. We've left everything as, as it was since we purchased the property twenty-two months ago. And we've had family members that, you know, back the story up, let alone being on our, being on the, the site plans and the, within the zones. Those are friendship agreements to have the sign, the current Rose Marine signs on that board. So, and we also agree that the sign, the sign approval will be a separate, will be a separate, you know, as proposed by the planners, be a separate part for a separate action. That should be a, a separate application.
And one of the things too, in terms of the sign, you know, it, it was, you know, basically our call, you know, to let the, the Lund sign and the Rose sign stay on the, stay on it. It was basically a neighborly thing to do. You know, we could have taken those signs down. That's our sign. We bought it. But I'd let it ride, we've let it ride, you know, for the past twenty-two months free of charge as a neighborly gesture.
The, it's tough to see again, but this is, this is just a site plan. It says existing sign. It's on four or five of the prints. If you, if you look on it, it's easier to see on the, on the larger prints. But it shows that sign's on, on, on the property. It goes to a letter, I think that we, she submitted, we submitted that letter also to the, to the township. This is basically some of the Lupinski's. I think there's two or three of them that gave some more detail on that sign.
This is the daughter of Bart Lupinski. She wrote a letter regarding her dad's sign and, you know, the basic specifics of the sign. And she sent it to the township.
You know, now we started getting the special land use approvals. You know, the one thing that we've always looked back and, and saw in the vision of the Clay Township was wanting to create a local destination, full recreation opportunities. We're protecting the environment, historical culture and the residential character of the community. So that really spoke to us because that's what we think we're bringing into this project is really fulfilling a lot of those things with, with the recreational and being a waterfront. And that property being really underutilized for many years is just kind of sitting back there. I mean, the people we bring out there now, like, they can't believe that it's been sitting so empty for so long. So, you know, the, we go through the, we go through these points and, and we don't, you want to cover these?
Well, I'd like to go a little bit over the historical, you know, and that's something that's brought up and was brought up in the forty-two questions. You know, I've been coming out to Clay Township since nineteen sixty-one. We've already talked about that. You know, grandpa bought a boat and he stayed at Dell Harbor. Basically, I've been coming out here, love the place, want to do something right. And, you know, it's a boater's destination. It's a perfect location as far as, you know, how it's going to be maintained and operating. We're going to be operating it. We're going to be there working. We're going to make sure that, you know, people follow the rules that we're going to have in place. You know, we're not going to have chaotic zoo going on. We're going to make sure everything's running right. And, you know, sure, there's an occasional, you know, knucklehead boater or something. You know, we all know who they are. You know, they're going to be talked to. They're going to be warned. You know, we're going to have video. You know, we're going to make, make sure that we take care of, you know, our project. And the historical part is a big part of it. And we're going to want to do, you know, a video run of, you know, how the island started, what it was before. You know, I got lots of pictures back with Model Ts out there and things like that that I want to use, something that'll be running on one of the multiple TVs in the restaurant that you can see old pictures and what's going on. I want to get input from the community of people who've dealt with the island. And that's all part of something we want to put in as far as the historical. I'm a big, big proponent of that.
A lot of these were already in, in our submitted. So just real quickly, you know, obviously the, the, the general, we went through these general and responded to these and we want to put them back up. So understand that, we understand the importance of these. We've addressed these, we believe. We, we can run through these pretty quick unless there's a question. You know, we know there's a master plan. Our purpose in the project is to enrich and belay a parcel and really make it a parcel a better place and attract, attract outside boaters, attract people to a beautiful island at beautiful sunsets. So I think that we fit into that master plan of, of recreation and entertainment and, and bringing this to a vacation destination where people are willing to spend a day or two or have a wedding at.
Well, there's other things too that we've talked about and we've gotten some input from the community. You know, basically they're saying, you know, it'd be great to have our high school graduation there and some of these other type events. You know, this is something that we want to get input. You know, we've talked to other people about possibly some kind of a, you know, fishing contest or a duck contest type of thing in a tent. You know, there's other little specialty events that we want to offer for the community and find out, you know, what fits best, what they want to come to and what makes sense, you know, for part of the community.
Yeah, so then back, we, we want to fit in a, a general vicinity of the area. I mean, we, we, we were up here, we're up here a lot now. We see that there's a lot of, you know, obviously a lot of boating, a lot of storage of boating. And we think this, it can be a lot more than just a boat storage area. I think that, that the, the land is beautiful and the sunsets are beautiful. And there's a lot of opportunity there that to bring the natural beauties for, for such things as just an evening dinner or a wedding or whatever scenic backdrop, it's, it's there.
Yeah, you know, one of the, one of the Clay Township residents I met at one of the other restaurants and we were talking about it and the, the island came up. You know, he said he'd been living here for nineteen years and, you know, yeah, he knows the island. And, you know, I said, well, what about the sunset? He says, oh, they look great, you know, but he only really gets to see it driving past the raft for a little bit. I says, wouldn't it be nice to come out on the island, have a burger with your wife and, you know, sit there and watch the sun pop, you know? So, you know, this is something that's going to get more people into the, into the mix in terms of being able to witness and sit and enjoy.
Again, it's number four. A lot of these kind of overlap each other, but to understand the importance of them, not distributing the, the existing, and the future use, the general vicinity. Obviously, we want to be, have it mesh in with vicinity in, in the area. It's a beautiful area with the boating. And so we think that our intentions are to bring that community closer together with, with, with a place for events, the community and for, for boaters alike. You know, we talked about Clay Township and they talked about the adequate essentials. They had a project control engineering, which is the Township's engineering, looked at an overview of it. And they, they confirmed that the sanitary system is adequate and the water distribution is adequate, sufficient and fire protection onsite detention pond is not required. They do require pre-treatment systems for stormwater drainage and our engineers have provided that. Obviously, the next step, building, if we get more detail on that, on those systems, I'm sure they'll be back reviewing those to make sure those detention, those, those storm sewer systems are adequate.
Right, as everyone knows, there's, they don't have storm sewers in Clay. So we're going to have the, a system in place to take care of our, our storm water.
It'll be a pre-treatment before it enters into the lake. The outside of that, the, the DTE's already been out, looked at the power. There's enough power, obviously it runs, runs that whole, this whole area out there at the street. And we have enough power on the island right now, although we're going to do some, do some things to improve it and bury it, hopefully bury it under the ground instead of having wires above. You know, the concern about additional requirements, public cost, facilities, services. You know, our project doesn't create excessive additional requirements to the public cost, facilities, services and the welfare of the community. So we, we think we want to be an asset, bring economy, welfare, community, bring vacationers, destinations that will generate commerce for, for us and for the community.
And that's the other thing too. You know, we want to hire, you know, Clay Township people. I've already had a house that I've been working on, buying stuff from the local plumbing and lumberjack and so on and so forth, hiring people out of Clay Township to work there. You know, we want to hire Clay Township people to work here.
You know, one of the things involves, there's Joe driving a truck right there.
Yeah.
The process, material, the equipment, the conditions, obviously there's concern, number seven, with, it comes to this, when our project, you know, obviously there'll be a lot of activity on the island and, and like any construction site, you know, obviously we'll take into consideration the welfare, both with traffic and noise and smoke and fumes and glare. We, we wanted to burn even the frags this winter or spring and we just didn't, couldn't get the, the conditions right. So we decided to hold off. And we were working with the fire department to push that off. We really wanted that smoke in, in the right direction. So we, we held off on that, decided it wasn't, couldn't find the right deal. So there is some consideration, you know, in all that, where the property is being set, how it was designed, where, where, where the activities will take place. And, and that's why we're really trying to stay focused on that, on that South Shore. I mean, number eight goes into the harmony and the adjacent to the environment. Obviously, we're doing as much as we can to preserve that natural front. I think the Army Corps was happy that we, we didn't push to, to change that frontage. So, with the frags and eliminating those are, it's not a natural, it's an invasive species. It's kind of took over that area, the, the, the treatments we've done had, had some great success and it was, it was quite a bit less, although it's a two or three year process to get those frags off and natural plants to grow. So, that's in process. We want to plant more additional, it depends on the, the, we've been approved to plant, so we'll see how that, that goes as far as into wetlands. We still got to get the frags out, so it's, it's a time consuming process and it's going to, you know, preserve that wetlands in that, in that whole front of the area, so.
And we've cleaned, we've cleared out some of the dead trees and, and there's still a few more to go, you know, and basically, you know, we've gotten a grant, an area that we created quite a nice area of grass. Some of the local neighbors were saying, boy, that looks like nice, it looks like a golf course. You know, we're trying to make it look nice there. It's something, you know, Clay Township would be proud of, you know, and, and that basically means getting that frag out of there, getting that land where we can cut it and keep it tight.
Number nine, you know, concerns with development in the surrounding property areas. I mean, we've, we've got a lot of commercial area, I showed that area with all the commercial, this is kind of a big commercial area, zone commercial in Clay Township. This property's been dormant for quite some time as far as real industrial or any commercial use, was very limited commercial use. So, we want to improve this property, we also want to make it a park like setting, you know, and it's a matter of getting those frags out, getting, getting grass down, mowing it, treating it. We intend to be at least, at least at the, where we're, where we're talking about developing that, that 130,000 square feet will be, will be grassed at least and landscaped. And we'll have to work on the north end in time to work on removing those frags and getting that area cleaned up.
You know, one of the things too, you know, in terms of, you know, what we're doing here, you know, we want to have that nice event area, you know, for the weddings and whatnot, people taking advantage of it. You know, we don't want to put a bunch of big buildings there and just store boats out there, you know, we're, we're, we're zoned for that, we can store boats on there. DEQ and Army Corps said, you guys can put a lift in there and start jacking boats in there. You know, we don't want to be a boat, just tie that piece of property up and just a big boat storage area.
So, we brought this meeting to last and the, the Chief of Police had a, had a great comment, we really enjoyed what he had said. I think he believes in the fact that we following, we're trying to follow the ordinances, we're doing what we can appearance wise, appearance wise, as far as, you know, traffic and lighting, sound study performed, and we're taking the necessary step to comply in the ordinances. And we really have backed off things, you know, we're not here to fight, we, we, we find an issue, we, we try to find a solution that's both, fits for both us and, and the ordinances, within the ordinances, so.
And, and within the community, you know, we're trying to work with the community, do what we can, you know, to the best of our ability. And that's why we gave up the north shore, that's, you know, a lot of, there was a lot of pushback, you know, from, from Star Drive and Keith and some other people were talking about it, that he was concerned his son couldn't pull his boat out, you know, and hit the dock, you know, one of the poles, you know, we don't want to tie that up, we want to keep that clear and open. So, we're, we're listening to what they're saying and we're trying to implement that because they're our neighbors and, you know, we want to, you know, be deeper.
You know, MDOT, we know we've got the permit already for the driveway, it's been approved. MDOT looked at the, the studies on the traffic, required no additional, nothing else to be done on that road. We all know the traffic, we've done, looked at the numbers. And, you know, to get started, there's already a huge investment that's been, already spent and that needs to be spent to make that property right. I mean, maybe every like a five lane highway, it's just, it's not, it's, you know, it's not in our budget and, and it's not in MDOT's budget, it would have been there already. We, we want to work with, with, with the township and work with the MDOT to make sure it's right, based on the studies that our, our engineers have done and working with MDOT and have spent a lot of time with MDOT to make sure that, you know, we, we fit within MDOT's plan. So far, we, we look like we comply, they've issued the permit and we'd like that as a starting point to rest, so we, we can move forward.
You know, and MDOT, you know, they're, obviously, they're the authority, but, you know, we, we got the name of the engineer consultants that we use from them. They gave us a list of names. I hired the first guy who called me back, you know, basically, they did the work and they work with MDOT all the time and they're coming back and saying, somebody brought up a comment a couple of times, the Family Dollar had to put in the center turn lane. Well, I checked with them and they said, well, the Family Dollar's turns are almost four times the turns of the restaurant. That's what they're telling us, okay? So, this isn't something I made up, that's something you can check, I'm sure Rod can confirm that since he knows traffic. Family Dollars get a lot more turns in and out.
Well, it's, it's, it's how they're classified, it's how they're classified as a, as a convenience store or classified compared to how a restaurant's classified. You know, we talked about this earlier, this, we've turned our stuff into the, to the project control engineering, they reviewed it, so far, so good on that. Obviously, we, we haven't got, once we can get past the planning stage, we would then engage our engineers to do, we've already, to do some more of the detailed planning for the sewer systems and, and water systems. And, and the parking stormwater, so that, we've got flummel drawings and all that, but it would, it would need to progress once, once we move into that building stage. Yeah, we talked about this before, we've seen this before, we've sent this in all of our, that, that we've been just going through and trying to check off things that we've been asked to do, or we need to get approval for, or we think the meeting's done. So, we've hired the agencies, we've hired the, we've done the permits that, and got approvals on studies, so we're moving forward as best we can to make sure we're getting all the answers we can for you. And we, we think right now, we're in a position that we, we've done everything that we've been asked to do.
And I, you know, we went above and beyond, you know, when we did the sound study, that was not required from what we asked for by the planners. That's something that we took initiative on ourself because we wanted to see what was happening out there and we wanted to make sure that, you know, we had our ducks in a row in terms of what's required, what's required with the ordinances, what's the sound ordinance, because we want to be below that, we don't want to be a nuisance, you know, we want to conduct our business properly and make sure that we're not offending our neighbors. So, we did the sound study, we spent the money, we brought them in, and we are happy to report that we're going to be well within the guidelines, well below the guidelines and almost less than half of the noise at Dyke Road at 1,000 feet out.
It comes down to it, we kind of say, what, you know, what are we here for, what are we looking for? And, and there was a lot of options, obviously, earlier today, what we're looking for is a site plan to be, be approved, as proposed with no conditions. We're looking at special land uses as proposed, no conditions. And we're asking for the parking, for the marina, transit marina to count for 25% of our required parking. And that's, that's what we're looking for.
And we believe that, you know, since we're an island, that's fortunate enough to have a bridge on it, the majority of our customers are going to be coming by boat, you know, it's an island, you know, they're going to come by boat. So, we really need the 25% waiver, you know, which is only 25% of the boat, so that's a restricted number already based on who's coming to us by boat. If we didn't have a parking lot, car parking lot, then, then you could only get there by boat or walk onto the island. So, basically, we're going to, we're going to need that, that 25% for what we're doing. And the other thing to keep in mind is with our property and based on the total number of parking spots, which is part of this boat and the car parking combined, that big chart we always show here, show, is we're actually under the capacity for the areas based on the square footage, we have a lot more space, we're, we're cutting and restricting that number already. So, we're already restricting there, we're restricting on how many boats we can go there. So, we feel that, you know, in order to be able to operate our business and as everyone here knows, a lot of restaurants haven't done well in the past, you know, we're going to need to be able to do well in the summer because the winter, there's not a lot of people coming in and out to the restaurants.
Are you any questions?
I got a few secondary questions.
Yes.
Trash and dumpster receptacles, specifically, your grease trap as well, your grease disposal? Where are they located? And do you have, or do you have someone designated to pick that up?
Well, we're going to be, once, once we get our approvals, you know, and that's the assumed clause, we're going to be working with Great Lakes Restaurant, which I'm sure Rod's familiar with, or if those plans are familiar with. And they design all that kind of stuff in the kitchen area for the grease traps and whatnot, so that'll be all designed and well within code in terms of what they're doing. We haven't designed the final printout plans yet because we don't know.
Yeah, we know that.
I just didn't see it addressed anywhere, didn't want to.
Right here's the, the.
Yeah.
It's off the back door of the kitchen.
Do you have any bicycle parking areas that you indicated?
We haven't, we haven't drawn bicycle parkings in, though. I mean, we.
Clay Township people ride bikes a lot, so.
Well, I mean, that's, yeah, we could do that, it's, it's very easy.
We have, we have the space for it and if it's something that the Clay Township people are looking to do, then we'll definitely take a look at that, I mean.
Just make a note of that, please.
Yes.
Define your rafting procedure or program. What do you, first of all, what do you mean by rafting?
Rafting would be boats tying up boats, you know, boats tying up boats is pretty common in the area and pretty common in marinas, a lot of marinas will have, say, rafting mandatory.
Are they going to be rafting at the docks or out in the water?
Rafting off the docks.
Okay.
The pilings will be every 10 feet, so you'll be able to pull your boat on the side and then someone will tie off the hook.
Do you have designs for the bridge yet?
The bridge is on the plans, it'll be 30 foot wide, which is how wide the bridge is now, the structure underneath is.
And who's going to, who's going to put that in?
We are.
By who?
Um, well, we're, we're basically taking bids for that.
There was initial design, I believe it's in that packet. It's in, we have a design, we have a structural engineer that reviewed that bridge, I believe he put flummel drawings in the, in that spec sheet for us.
Yeah.
You're going to have the emergency operation plans as far as evacuation and take shelter?
Well, I, I, yeah, it's required by law.
Well, I want to make sure, I don't want to overlook it.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
I haven't seen any of that in there.
You mentioned a few times that this rafting is common. Can you tell us one place it's common for a restaurant like this and/or a marina facility of any area?
Well, Brownie's, you know, they raft dock, they raft off their dock, they have a dock that's, I don't know the exact length, but it can be Googled. And there's this very long, way past the restaurant boat dock off of there, 2, 3 feet.
2 feet you're proposing for, or what?
Well, this area down here where we're proposing is, we own the bottom limbs and we own the other side, so there's no traffic cutting through our south pond. There's a metal gate that was put in by Lupinski's down at this end. And there's also one at this end that we'll be removing as part of our permit. But this area is where we're proposing for, that can go deeper and we're allotted by the Army Corps. People will be coming in and docking off this, and that's for max capacity, once again. You know, that's when Matt, when we're at max capacity, that we will be docking that. But we don't see that, you know, as being a, you know, an everyday occurrence or anything like that. Certainly, in the summer season, there's no docking there, so it'll be during the summer season.
Another place, you know, the old, with the Watermark, rafting, that's always been consistent in a rafting restaurant. Brown, you know, you mentioned, it was Jack's Bay Lounge was, was rafting, Brown's Rafts.
You said it wasn't rafting. Oh, I can't even say it was rafting, is it still rafting?
Well, it changed names, but it's.
It was the Beach Grill?
Beach Grill and then it's Watermark, that's all rafted boats in there.
And where are they located?
St. Clair Shores. Locally, Brown's Rafts, their in docks are designed to raft, they raft every weekend on, on there, it's pretty common.
Around the whole perimeter?
It depends on the event, I mean, they've rafted the whole perimeter in, in, on poker runs, you know, when they have 60, 70 boats come in, they raft. Again, if you look at Brown's photos on our website, it's all for rafting photos. So, again, when they said mass capacity, I think most time a boat is going to pull in and take a wall spot next to it. You know, if two friends pull in, they may raft off each other. So, it's going to be, you know, they, they, a lot of times you'll see a rafting mandatory and it's, and those events, we have a 4th of July or you have a, you have a, a event where they need, we need, we need the space to raft the boats off, poker runs or some kind of fundraiser and boats will raft off. It's, it's going to be your last option, if there's a space you can park next to a wall, you typically, a captain's going to pull, pull next to the wall.
As of right now, I think most maps and drawings that we've seen for water levels are at least a year, if not older, their water levels, which, which obviously is right now, the water levels are high and I've heard that they're supposed to go higher. So, is of right now, how is the water affecting your parking in the area that the construction is to take place? And if it goes higher, what is the, what are the effects going to be for the parking lot and everything? Because if the water, I've heard as much as passably another 12 inches higher than what it was the spring, so if the water comes up 12 inches, where's the park, how is that going to affect the parking and?
We're raising the level of the grade, you know, where we're at, as part of our permit allowing dredge around the property where we're putting the seawall in. And so, what we'll be doing is where the, where the thing kind of slopes out, you know, from 4, we'll put the seawall in, dredging down 6 feet. And all that dredge material will be put in a spoils containment area, dry out and spread along the island. Our seawall is also a little bit higher than what a lot of the standards of seawalls in the area are. So, we're already going to be up and then sloping the property off from there so the water won't seep out and go through the treatment and out. So, we're, we're planning for that, it's a big concern. Ryan and I both live on the lake now, you know, we miss out on the island on the lake and that's definitely a big concern for everybody.
So, we went at the highest point last year, we measured, we started to seawall, we went 24 inches above the highest point last year. So, in the area, there were a lot of docks and a lot of homes that were almost level, so it already started, you know, exiting the lake. We're 24 inches above that and then we're going to protect the frontage, wetlands with a percale wall. We can put the percale walls on the, on the upland, at the upland.
Looking at a berm on the upland side of, of the property, that's horrible, out that way.
And in front of the restaurant pool there is an additional seawall, so it's protected that area. So, we, we've, we've slotted so the engineers are putting, putting the sewer systems all run towards the canals.
Yes.
And that's where the treatments are.
And a lot of times when, when flooding occurs and whatnot, the water raises to a certain point, but it, it can't go much higher, but it, it spreads out. So, it hits the low point and it spreads out, so it kind of levels at a certain point. So, we're above that, we're actually going to be higher than the BP who put in their seawall. And on top of all, our seawall will be a dock system so people can, boaters, you guys can pull up, walk up and down the dock, but that's going to add another 8 or 9 inches on top of the seawall. So, we're going to be higher yet. We can't go too high because if the water drops like it did 5, 6, 7, 8 years ago, you can't get off your boat onto the dock, as you guys all know. So, you got to be, you got to find a happy, happy spot there.
Going back to your rafting proposal of how boats will be, how is that going to be monitored and controlled?
Well, I, I, I think the main thing on days that we're going to be, it's either vent driven is going to be that large, we'll have a dock, dock master on the dock that runs it.
But not at any other time?
Uh, it's going to be based on the weekends and the, and the, and the traffic, you know, the, if we ever need. The staff, the management, the staff of the restaurant will also manage the docks, but if the, on those particular days that we need support, there're going to be someone out there.
And we're going to, we're going to be there as well, I mean, we'll be operating, we'll have other family members there, working, entertaining the guests and taking care of the food and whatnot. the food and whatnot, but if there's an issue out there, you know, we're gonna wanna take care of it, similarly to if Capri had a problem with someone in their dock, or they crashed into a boat, someone would go out there. We have quite a wide canal back there, which we're making actually wider than it was by taking our docks out, and if boaters are coming in, they're gonna pull into their boat, they don't need us watching, they can come in and tie their, their lines off in no time flat, second nature for boaters, but if there is a problem, we'll be on it, and on the busy days, we plan to have someone out there, and if there's an occasion where we have an event, a wedding or something going on, a charitable event, we wanna have someone out there to maintain what's going on, and that we adhere to the, the requirements that we were promised, that we promised to the Army Corps that we would adhere to, and we wanna follow the rules, so that's our plan.
So can you explain how you're gonna be able to run the restaurant and keep an eye on the boats at the same time?
Well, we're gonna have video surveillance, you know, and we'll, we'll probably.
monitored by who?
Well, you can do surveillance on your phones, and we'll have cameras, you know, basically trained inside the restaurant as well.
Are you gonna have shore power for the boats?
We'd like to, we, we haven't laid the electron, laid that all out yet, as far as the mechanical side of the electronics and the water and the power, we would like to add that later, probably at some point, add some power in, and most.
We're planning to sleeve it, we're planning to run sleeves and things like that and, and set up.
And prep it for it, but probably not in the budget to put it in right away.
I'm gonna answer to one of the questions about the mooring. You mentioned in, in response that people were gonna be given a mooring slip to put on their boats. I didn't hear that mentioned, how's that gonna happen?
I don't remember saying, do you know where it was referenced?
If, if.
We can check it out.
We did talk about if there was an event or something that was planned, and we were looking at a, a max capacity, that there would be something that we would be able to track who's coming in, and it could be in the form of a parking pass type situation.
I don't, I'm not sure we mentioned that, but I, I think if we did mention that, I would, I was, I would guess top of my head, we would just, you could, if we had an event that you could purchase a slip or purchase an area, sorta like, you know, I purchased, we purchased wells at Brown's and.
That might be for an overnight stay, though.
But you don't have slips, this is all.
Boat parking.
Yeah, I mean, when I think of a slip, and maybe I'm totally wrong, you're pulling into, not this configuration that we're seeing by any means.
Well, this configuration's pretty common, I mean, I've been to.
Or here on, on the Black River, you know, they.
Well, how are you not calling yourself a marina? You wanna put power in for the marina right away, and now you wanna charge people to park their boats there, or give them a slip to park boats there. How are you not a marina, just 'cause you're not giving fuel? Are you gonna have a waste pump out facility, too?
We're not giving fuel, we're not.
I know, you're not giving fuel, but you're, you're gonna be charging for a transient well. How are you not a marina?
We're not a traditional marina that has.
I could park a boat in my house and say I'm not a tradit, traditional marina, but what I'm saying is, is you're telling us you're not a marina, but yet you wanna offer power later, you wanna charge them for parking overnight, how, explain that one.
I think it falls in the fact of a, of a transient dockage, not a marina.
Well, I know what a transient dockage is, I live right across from Algonkin Harbor, they have transient dockage, they have power, they have everything you're gonna give them people, except they can get gas there.
And we're not seasonal. We're not, you guys rent a well for the season.
No, not transient, they just don't rent wells, they rent it by the day.
Right.
Exactly.
And that's what you're offering.
Exactly right.
Okay.
Well, at this point, we appreciate all your comments, the next phase of this public hearing would actually be hearing from the public, and before we do that, Chris, would you mind reading the public, here, we have mine if you want, here you go, just so we're all on the same page, we've gone through this before, but just so we know.
Hey Rod, did you address this?
What's that, Mark?
Did you address, did Rod address that?
Well, I'm gonna let the public and then.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I will, and if I don't, please remind me, okay?
Okay.
Go ahead, Chris.
Public hearing, public comment rules. One, all comments must be made through the chairperson, comments directed to the applicant from the audience are prohibited. Two, individuals wishing to speak have time limits, three minutes for each member of the general public, and six minutes for a spokesperson of a larger group, such as a subdivision association, condo association, business group, and similar groups. Three, anyone wishing to speak is asked to sign the signage provided, however, anyone wishing to speak will be given the opportunity. Four, each individual will be allowed to speak once, it will be the chairperson's decision as to whether rebuttal comments will be allowed. Five, citizens may appoint a spokesperson to represent those who agree on a point of view, and six, public comments on a specific public hearing request should be made during the public hearing for that item.
Thank you. Okay, any member of the public who wishes to come forward and speak, please come to the podium. Ma'am, on my right here, and state your.
I have a question, can I?
Yeah, why don't you come to the podium, please. State your name and address, please.
My name is Linda Freund, 7770 Phillips Drive, and I would just like to give my time to the attorney if he needs extra time. Can I do that?
See, representing you then, he's already got his six minutes, so, but.
The group, well, the last time he was kinda cut short.
No, the group, he is a group, gets his six minutes, which he just read for the rules, and he knows that it's his six minutes. I have yet to cut anybody off exactly at six minutes, but I usually say, could we kinda wrap this up?
Well, I just thought I'd give him a few more minutes.
So, we're gonna go with six minutes, we'll see. And we know you represent a group, but could you state your name and?
Derek Internet, I can attorney, 24001 Greater Mack Avenue, St. Clair Shores, I live in Chesterfield. I wrote two letters to your group, one was just yesterday, because I just received some information, and I assume that you've gotten that.
Yes.
And that reflects in the chain of title that there's a deed restriction for the, the big island piece, that said you couldn't have a dance hall or bathing pavilion, and basically that's part of their promotion, that this is that type of facility or a resort. And then in my December 5th letter, I pointed out, and I just wanna highlight a few things, is that your zoning ordinance says that you have to have 10 acres if you have a resort or similar facility, and in their written presentation, in their presentation tonight, they're basically saying that this is a destination, an amusement place, a park, a dance pavilion, and similar things, and they've gotten a permit from the Liquor Control Commission to transfer a liquor license. So if they don't have 10 acres, I don't think you can approve it, 'cause they don't meet the minimum size requirement, because all of their records reflect, and even tonight they said that they have four acres in size. The, they acknowledged deficiencies in their parking, and they never speak to the fact that in their presentation, the written, that they say they'll generally have 10 to 25 employees. So where are those employees supposed to park? Now, they say some will carpool, and in their presentation, in the writing, they say some will use Uber, but there's no specifics as to that. The, they make reference to the pylon sign, I represent Bill Rose, I've represented him for a good number of years, as far as Mr. Rose is concerned, that's his sign, he's been using it for 20 years, plus or minus. So if he does, if it's not on his property, which I believe it is, if it's on the neighboring piece, he has rights by adverse possession, because of the statute in Michigan is 15 years, the, the sign is probably non-conforming as to height, and it has the original sign that says Arts Harbor, and then it has Rosemarine and the Lund Boat sign, so I don't think they can unilaterally take that sign down and replace it with their own. In my letter, I pointed out, 'cause before they said they were gonna have some kind of a sign that would say that the parking lot's full, but they don't show that in their presentation, and if you're driving from the east to west, you'll probably see the sign sooner, but if you're driving from west to east, you're not, and that sign's located behind the Edison Utility Pool, so it's quite a ways back from the paved portion of the road. Now, M Dock did give them a permit, seems kinda strange, at Dollar General in Ira Township, they made them put in value class lanes, but here they say you don't need them, but if you have a wedding event there, or a graduation party, usually at the start time of those functions, there's a greater traffic generation at the start or the stop of those functions, and it seems to me that that's a hazard, that your group shouldn't permit. I did address a little bit that the, the rafting off of boats, they may own the bottom land, because a lot of times if you get property from the DNR, they may convey to you the bottom land, but their conveyance always says that the right of the general public for navigation, swimming, boating, et cetera, is preserved to the general public. And in this layout, if this is M 29, here's their bridge, they're gonna have boats rafted four across here, so the only way that you can come in is from this way and down, and if you come in and down, you're gonna turn, and then they're gonna say, at maximum capacity, they're gonna have four rafting boats. But if you approve that, it seems like the Clay Township is saying, we'll allow you to trespass against the private property of a boat owner that's already there that docked against the dock, and I think that's a disaster waiting to happen. The, they say future boathouse, and that they're gonna use portal, portable toilets and semi-trucks for lavatory facilities. It seems kinda strange that any group would approve this large of a development without permanent toilets, for not only the people in the restaurant, but the boaters, and the people that come to use the pool, or just people that come to visit, somebody that already brought their boat there. The other thing I pointed out is they only have two fire hydrants on the property, it's tough to read this, but this is the end, and they're still gonna be rafting out here, and there's gonna be rafting here, and the fire plugs are in this general area and one up here. So if there's a fire down here, or any kind of emergency, your first responders are gonna have to walk a long ways to get to where that situation is at hand. I pointed out, and I think it's general knowledge, people live in that community, that at a time it was a marina, it was kind of a waste dump for activities out there, they've never submitted an environmental study, either a Phase 1 or Phase 2, soil samples as to what's in the ground there, the, and to approve any program with, such as the paving, with no bond requirement, then every new development in, in Clay Township is gonna come and say, well, let us pave it when we get to it, and don't require us to have a bond.
Your six minutes is up, so if you could wrap it off, that'd be great.
Yeah, I just wanted, so the people that I represent would respectfully request that you deny their special approval land use, and they admit the deficiency in the parking, and as Rod indicated, that maybe as to the restaurant, you can approve that only if they meet the requirements, including parking for the restaurant, patrons, and the employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the audience like to come forward? Sir? State your name and address, please.
My name is Keith Stein, and my residence is 7889 Stark. I represent the residents of Stark Drive in my comments today, and I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to speak. Some of the representations made by the petition, by, by the petitioners seem to lack credibility. They've made comments in October and again today, in today's meeting, that the Fire Department and the Police Department support this project. I ask everybody here when the last time they heard a Police Department or a Fire Department support a venue that will serve liquor to, in a party environment, and then allow those participating in that to either boat or drive in our community. They also stated that they plan to have fundraisers for the Fire Department and Police Department, and I'll leave that to everybody here to digest what that sounds like. Brian Brow posted on Facebook that he wanted that portion of that property to be like put-in bay. I think we all know what put-in bay is, and it is not what they're describing. Today, Joe mentioned that the noise from their machines and putting in the seawall could not be heard on the northwest side of the property. I live on the far west side of that property, and I heard the seawall going in at, at all times. They're also telling us that this is good for the community. Currently, the land has a taxable value of $190,800. In speaking with the people at the township, about seven mils goes to the township, so doing the math, that's about $1,336 that the township is getting in revenue from the raw land. If we assume that they drop $5 million into this project, that would result in $35,000 in taxes for the community, and if we wildly assume that they put $10 million into this, creating a $10 million taxable value, that would result in a $70,000 revenue base for the township. One police officer to help patrol this would go way beyond that $70,000. They've made several references regarding their plans, and yet we have not, and their budgets, yet we have not seen a business plan, and what sound business organization proceeds with a project of this nature without a business plan? Before this board can approve this project, they owe it to themselves and the community to see what the business plan is, to see exactly how the petitioners plan to make money, how many drinks will be sold, how many boats will be moored, how many weddings, et cetera. Parking issue could be resolved, this parking issue that we're talking about could be resolved if they put parking on the north, on the northeast side of their property, which in the, in the, in the maps they show here, it's, it's, it's blank. So the question that a skeptic might raise is, what are they planning on doing with that property later on? I recognize that we all are neighbors, and that as such, we all want what is best for this community. We want a safe and prosperous environment for our families, however, this project does not satisfy this, and it does not conform to our master plan. Accordingly, I respectfully request that the board deny petitioners' request. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Any other member of the public? Sir?
Hello, my name's Larry Shivers, I live at 7770 Farnsworth, and I'm concerned about the, the neighbors, the neighborhood, and the, it was brought up about being friendly to the neighbors, and I just wonder why they're insisting on piping in that music, all right, they're within the law and within the rules and that, but why do they do it? I mean, what, with all the other boats and all the other music going on, and the neighbors don't like that, why, why do they push that? You know, I just don't understand why they gotta have that music, you know, it just, it's not being very neighborly, in my opinion. And the other thing with the dollar store, I, I can't believe that the traffic going in and out of a dollar store, one or two an hour, or whatever, three an hour, whatever, five, 10 an hour, is nowhere gonna match the traffic that you get at a restaurant at dinnertime. Okay, I just can't understand that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other members of the audience? Sir?
Scott Walgrave, 7873 Stark Drive. I have two concerns. One is the noise, you know, if we, from what I read, it'll be 73 decibels on shoreline. That's loud, that's comparable to standing next to two dishwashers, one on each side of you, running. That's what you hear at your door wall. Number two, the transient parking. So if I go by boat, and someone's parked to the seawall, I tie off to him, and someone else ties off to me, I wanna leave, what happens to that third boat? He just floats away into water? See you later, bye? What do you think, everyone's just gonna go say, hey, I gotta move my, my boat? Then a guy sitting at the bar after a few beers, it's not gonna be in a real hurry, it's gonna be a pain in the, now I gotta go move my boat, he's drunk already, so we're gonna let him start his boat and move his boat around while he's already been drinking. This is a bad idea for Clay Township, period. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? Sir?
How you doing?
How you doing? James Seidel, 9533 Estre Green. It was 130,000 square feet building that you're building, correct?
I said...
It was 130,000 square feet. Does anybody remember what it said, the square footage?
Hold on.
That's what's going to be built, right?
Developed area.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
The developed area?
Oh, the developed area.
Building's 44.
Okay, well, that sounds like a lot of jobs for Clay Township, especially since you're going to be hiring people from around this area. Tradesmen working close to home and not driving me two hours at home every night from Detroit. It would be a lot nicer driving five minutes to work. I think that's something we also have taken into consideration. It does seem like it's a lot of jobs. The restaurant's going to need people, it's going to need security after everything's developed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other members of the public who would like to come forward?
Hi, my name is Jim Newman, 7650 South Channel Drive. Thank you for granting me your audience. I do understand that the topic that I'm bringing up is completely off the subject.
Okay, hold on a second. Is it what we talked about earlier?
Yes.
Okay, this is not the time. This is not the right public comment session.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I'm only stopping you because of that, because you caught me before the meeting.
Okay.
It'll be coming up, but not this time.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I'm just going to stop you for that. Okay. Any other public comments regarding this public hearing for this project? Going once, going twice? Any hands? Anybody in the audience? Seeing no hands, I am going to close the public hearing at 8:31. Thank you. All right. So Planning Commission members, Rod, would you be able to put up the slide or whomever of some of the options us as Planning Commission members have? Because again, part of this is special land use and part of it is the restaurant. So we've got a lot of more information again tonight via public comments. Also, in our packet, there were letters that came from three or four people in favor of this project and one person not in favor of the project. So we also have that information that was submitted to us, along with what we got tonight via the planners, via applicants, via members of the audience. These are the special land use nine items, but planners, if you'd like to...
You wanted me to run through the options again, is that the question?
Would you mind and make it very clear that there's the restaurant, that's one part of this, and then the special land uses, okay?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
The first one that's listed here is what the applicant's asking for. Approve the special land use application and the site plan as presented, okay? So that's all of the uses that have been described. Another option, the next one that's listed here, is the restaurant is not a special land use. Restaurant is a principal permitted use. If they come forward with a site plan that meets your ordinance requirements for the restaurant, and that's the indoor operation of the restaurant, basically, that needs to be approved if it meets your ordinance, okay? So one option would be to approve the restaurant only and not approve any of the special land uses, which are the outdoor activities that are part of this operation. And then in between that, for the most part, there's a lot of other variations in terms of where you might go, depending upon what you're comfortable with. Some of those are related to the intensity, in terms of the number of people that might be on the site at any one time. So that's the maximum capacity of the tented area and the pool area, which is that 400-plus number of people. And others relate to controlling how far into the late evening and early morning hours the activities occur, which are outdoors. Now, is there a concern, because you have residential next door, that you would want to have some impact on that? So you see a number of variations, and I'll just briefly go through them. Obviously, these are not the only ones that exist, but these are just some that come to mind. Approve the special land use in the site plan as presented, but limit the capacity of the tentative in area and the outdoor pool area to a specified lesser amount and then reevaluate. So this gives you an opportunity to say, okay, we're, for example, we're concerned about parking, or we're concerned about the intensity of the area. We're going to approve what they're asking for, but we're not going to approve the number of people. We're going to limit the capacity to something less than what they're asking for, okay? That could be one option. And then they could go through one season of operation, come back for renewal or special land use permit, and you could then potentially increase that if you find that things are working well. Or you may keep it the same, or you may otherwise modify it. So that's one option. Approve the special land use in site plan as presented, but limit the number of tented events and outdoor pool area events to a specified maximum number. So for example, you may say, all right, we don't have a problem with that as long as it doesn't exceed whatever that is. Is it one per weekend? Is it one per month? Is it two per week? Is it, whatever that number might be that you're comfortable with, you could start off by allowing a certain number. Once again, see how well that works over a season and then potentially revisit it after a season of operation. Approve the restaurant and pool patio area, and then approve the marina with no overnight use. Because that's another option, because originally, when this came forward, there was discussion that there would be no overnight marina parking. And the applicant has modified that and is now asking for that overnight marina parking. If you have a concern about that, you could approve it without overnight parking, or you could also approve it without any rafting. And you could just say, you can use the mooring spaces that are up against the seawall, but there will be no rafting. So those are other options that are certainly presented for you to consider. Approve the restaurant and the tented event area and not approve the pool entertainment area. Okay, so that's another option that exists, which would be a variation of the ones we just talked about. Approve the special land uses and the principal uses and limit the hours of operation, the outdoor activity. So you could approve everything they're asking for at the level they're asking for, but you may say, okay, at midnight, no more outdoor activity. Everything would have to stop at midnight. So it's just an example of what one condition, or 1:00 AM, for example, rather than 2:00 AM. And then approve all special land uses and principal uses and limit or prohibit overnight stay by boats and vehicles, okay? So that was kind of a hybrid of ones we've talked about. And then there are others. And then, of course, deny the special land uses that have been presented and then postpone if you're not ready to take action. So those are just some of the potential...
Okay.
...options that you have before you.
I do have a question, because this has come up numerous times, especially the attorney who represents the group here, in regards to the parks and recreational, the 10 acres. And the language that's used in the applicant's last submitted seems at times to, that's what it sounds like they're asking for. So I guess I'm looking for clarification on that?
Yeah, that's a good question. So you're, under Section 20.43 of your ordinance that talks about recreation, commercial, outdoor, I'll read to you what it says.
Okay.
So it says, "Outdoor commercial recreation uses shall include, but need not be limited to, the following: miniature golf, animal racing, go-kart, automobile and motorcycle tracks, amphitheaters, museum, excuse me, amusement parks, drive-in theaters, air gun or survival games, campgrounds, including youth camps, religious retreats, and hunting camps, recreational vehicle parks or travel trailer parks, resorts, fairgrounds, batting cages, ski slopes, skate park, skateboard parks, flea markets, and uses similar to the above uses, and uses accessory to the above uses, such as refreshment stands, retail shops, and the like." So do you think that what they're proposing is similar to those uses?
Okay.
I would say, as I look at it, having a restaurant with outdoor tented wedding functions, I would say, is not consistent with this. There are some other events they've talked about, such as fishing tournaments and other things that may start to cross the line. That becomes a question for you to consider. And once again, as part of your motion, if you choose to move forward, you could limit those other activities that you think are not consistent with restaurant and outdoor tented functions, such as weddings and corporate events, and restrict that so that it doesn't fall within this. Or you could determine that it does fall within this and then apply these standards, and then there might be, there'd be a problem with this application. So that's a finding for the Planning Commission to make, depending upon how you see this use being proposed. But I can certainly see where you're seeing that, depending upon the level of activities that are outside of weddings and restaurant activities and the like. So there's a judgment call that has to be made here.
Because somewhere in this last, the middle, there was talk about, and I don't see it necessarily on the site plan, about nature trail walking and all that stuff, which kind of then sounds like it's bringing it back into that 10-acre thing.
Right, but we don't really see that on the site plan.
I don't see it on the site plan, but again, this whole project seems to have entailed a lot of changing of information from applicants. At least, that is my personal perception at times. So I'm trying to get a handle on that aspect of it.
The proposal has changed as it's gone through the process.
But the site plan at this point doesn't show what I just referred to.
That's correct.
Okay. I would also say that, and I lost track of time, sometime in the summer, there was a get-together with MDOT in this particular room. I believe Matt was present. There was a lot of other people present. I mean, at that time, Sid was here, I think already our supervisor was here, at least five people from the MDOT agency were here. They made it very, very clear to us at that table, along with applicants, that no matter what, this project was going to have accessibility from M-29. Their preferred method was maybe a joint driveway with Rosemarine, but that wasn't happening. So I got the impression, though, that this is not the ideal... ...accessing into this property, but with the limitations of what we have going, that's what we have at this point.
Right.
Does not mean it's the safest way to do it, but they made it very, very clear that this was somehow going to have access from M-29. So that was another meeting we had, or get-together, however you want to phrase it, so...
Can I just clear one thing up? The property size.
The property size?
Yeah, property size. Our boaters, our property size. We can develop about 3.5 acre, roughly, with the water it is now, close to four. We have an acre of uplands, which is five.
Wetlands.
Wetlands. We have, the total property size is 15 acres.
Is what? One five?
Includes the bottom. Acres, acres of the entire property, if you take those properties and draw a circle around our entire property, it's 15 acres.
It's not developable at this point.
I'm just saying, our property...
I know what you're saying, but we have a lot of property owners who have a, maybe waterfront property that people tell us, you may say 10 acres, but we only get to develop five of them, maybe.
Well, we own the bottom lands, is what he was saying.
I totally understand that.
We bought the deed from a state.
And we already, we've covered that. We're very, we're already very clear on that part of it. So I don't question what you just said. I get that.
As far as, Rod, as far as the marina parking is, this, what they're suggesting, I mean, it sounds like marina. And if we were, if they're requesting not to have parking for the marina, what is our accountability? Because I mean, we can grant them the waiver for the 25% for the boat parking and everything, but what, where would our limitations be on saying, yes or no, you can't, you can or cannot have the parking as far as the marina is concerned?
If you find that this is in fact a marina per your ordinance, you would not have the ability to waive that parking. That would have to be the only, the Zoning Board of Appeals. If you find this is not a marina and something unique, and I want to actually read the definition so that everybody's clear. Your ordinance defines a marina as follows. "A facility for the storing, servicing, fueling, birthing, and securing of boats, and that may include eating, sleeping, and retail facilities for owners, crews, and guests." That's your definition of a marina. So if you find that this is a marina per that definition, then the parking requirements would need to be met, or they would have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals and seek
So if they meet some of those and not all of them, is it not all or nothing? Or is it, if any of them apply?
That's...
Is that up to us?
That's up to you to make that determination as to whether you think it's a marina or not.
What's the definition of birthing?
Of what?
Birthing.
I don't think you're going to have that in your ordinance, but I will...
No, no. I didn't...
Is it? It is in there? Okay, good. All right, I may be wrong. I don't see, oh, boat birthing, yeah. Boat birthing. Docking of a boat in water within a space in a marina.
I just want to throw something out there. The transient boaters, the amount, I think people seem concerned about that, you know, how many there would be. And they want the waiver, the 25% waiver. Would it be wise to limit the transient to the amount of boats in the waiver?
You could, you could say that it...
It would limit...
I think it's 36 was the number, if I recall.
That would cut down on your overnight stay.
So 36 of the required spaces would be provided by the transient marina. So that's the number they need in order to get the 25%.
So you...
Limit them to 36, if they can stay overnight or wherever, how long they intend. That makes, well, because you could, possibly right now, they could feel that everybody could stay, right?
Potentially, if they achieve what they, you know, what they're asking for, which is exactly that.
And they're proposing 15 days, up to 15 days.
Up to 15 days.
That's what they're proposing, yes. 15, up to 15 days.
I had a question regarding the, not to change the subject, but the pool. There was a question posed to the applicants about a swim-up pool bar, because they're considered as not permitted in the state of Michigan. The response was that the state that made the question was not correct, although it was quoted from the DEQ statutes, even by yourselves, where you said, "R325.21928. If the owner allows, owner or operator allows food or drink and associated articles in a swimming pool enclosure, then the owner or operator shall comply with all the following provisions. Provide poolside control to maintain safe and sanitary conditions. Not permit food preparation in a swimming pool enclosure. Prominently display assigned conveying requirements for safe and sanitary disposal of all food, waste, and precluding consumption of food and beverages within the pool." My question is, you state you want the tables and chairs to use in the pool. For what purpose?
Those are in the area that would be designated for the bar area, once they approve the bar serving of alcohol in the pool, similar to they do at the Wisconsin Dells or Cedar Point, so...
Or put-in-bay.
Or put-in-bay, yeah. Where they allow, what they're talking about doing is allowing us to design the pool with the space for a future bar, should it be changed. They're allowing us to design it, but not use it as a bar nor put the equipment in there. So in other words, when we build the pool, if they haven't changed the rule from DEQ, then we'll have chairs in there, or people can stand in there, or we'll cover it off. But at least it'll be there once they, if they do approve it. And based on our conversations with them, and they have talked to Wisconsin Dells, they have talked to other places that allow that... have talked to other places that allow that, and they're working towards it, is basically the way we feel, but we don't have any approvals yet, and nor are we saying that we do.
Well, you said you had a verbal approval.
Well, they told us that the law needed to be changed. That's what they said. It's been 20 years in the making, and if they would talk to other people, we've also talked to a high-up appointed representative for the state. And basically, they are investigating, looking at, they now want us to give them a copy of the plan, the pool plan. And we're, we've contacted the pool installer to design the pool so that we can submit it to them and that they can look at that space that will not be a bar, but will be designed to be a bar if the law gets changed.
But you couldn't serve, it's, it's all food beverage. So right now with Michigan laws, you couldn't serve glass of ice water into a pool. You couldn't serve any food or any, and that's, it's not alcohol or not alcohol, it's not, that's not how it relates. They did say we could use that space, whether that space may be a 10-foot area, and put chairs that looks into the pool. So someone could stand inside the pool and someone could stand outside the pool. You couldn't serve alcohol or, or be in consumption of alcohol in that pool area, is what I was saying.
And how do you propose to prevent that from happening?
We won't allow anyone to drink in the pool or eat in the pool. You know, I, people, you know, people, people want to, you know, drink in my jacuzzi, you can't drink in them. You know, we're not going to allow people to drink in the pools. It's against the rules. We want to follow the rules.
Okay, and then at the end of the question, it asked if you would provide an addendum or an affidavit to your site plan saying that no such swim up pool bar would be installed until it was approved by Michigan law. And you tell us it would be, if needed, we are willing to provide a written affidavit.
Right, we're not going to serve liquor in the bar, in the pool from the area that.
That wasn't my question.
Okay, I misunderstood.
My question was, would you give, the question to you was, will the applicants provide written addendum or an affidavit to their site plan that until legislature approves swim up pool bars in Michigan, no such swim up pool bar will be constructed on your site?
The actual bar area or the actual bar in the bar area?
The pool bar.
We would like to design the pool. I guess I'm, I'm not.
You're telling me you've got permission to design the pool with the pool bar area, but you're not going to use it?
Build, you can run a counter, basically be a counter inside of the pool.
But you're saying there's going to be tables and chairs too?
Well, we could put, she said we could put chairs in there.
That's not against the pool. You can put tables and chairs.
It's not in the pool.
You can do the, you can do a pool, if we can do the counter space, we couldn't have, can't service into that space.
I understand that, but you're saying that, the, the question was, would you provide an affidavit saying that you won't construct the pool bar until it's approved in Michigan?
And that was the confusion. We were, we were, we are allowed to build, construct, I guess, the bar or counter, I don't know. You bar area.
We own the counter and the bar. We can't service into that.
I guess my question is, why would you build that if you can't use it and you have no guarantee that this law is ever going to pass and you want us to approve that?
Christine, I think there's the bar area in the pool. Picture the pool and they cut out an area. This is an area that we're going to build like it's part of the pool. We're going to build it ahead of time because if they approve the law, which we believe that they will, we can't later cut the pool out and put the bar in the pool like a swim up pool bar. So what we would like to do, we checked with them, is that we can make the area for the bar, but we're not going to put any of the bar equipment in, no ice machine, no, no, no liquor cabinets, no water, anything. It'll be set up, if they approve it, that we can bring in the ice machines, the, the space will be there, but we're not going to use it there, nor are we going to serve liquor in the pool or food, nor will we allow it. So we are willing to, you know, we, we will not put the bar in the bar area, but we want to create the bar space, which during, before, if the rule is not approved, we can put chairs in there and people can sit there and talk to their friends, and, and they can, they can eat a sandwich in there, in that space. It's not in the pool. And that's what we've been told and that's what we would like to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As the site plan sits right now, this is the site plan that they're asking for, I'm just going to say the whole request that we've already said. Only hypothetically speaking, the restaurant is a permitted use there.
Correct.
Hypothetically, if we were to say, okay, no problem with the restaurant with whatever goes with that, this would have to be a new site plan submitted?
If you just approved the restaurant.
If we just do that.
Yes, it would need to be conditioned upon a site plan being submitted that removes all the special land uses from the site plan.
Is there, I don't even know the correct terminology, because a lot of times we'll write on site plans, you know, with conditions. Is there another way to go about writing, if there's conditions, like a signed contract? Because we have a tendency on this particular project to have confusion of what both sides are looking for and/or agreeing to or not agreeing to.
If it's, if it's a principal permitted use, typically when you're signing the approval, you could write the conditions on there. For special land use, we recommend that there actually be a special land use permit.
Okay.
So that when you approve it, it'll list the findings of fact, and it'll list the very specific conditions that you attach, so that everybody's clear what those conditions are, and then that becomes the actual special land use permit. So if you choose to approve one or more of the special land uses, we would recommend that following meeting, come back with the actual permit, so that everybody sees it and everybody's clear and make sure they all agree that those were the conditions. And then that becomes part of the record as to what you formally approved.
Okay. I'm sure they could.
Sure, you can always apply for special land use permit at any time. Your application's available as long as it's permitted in the district.
Well, the public hearing's now been closed. We've got a lot of information again, every time we do this project, it seems like it is a large project and there are different components to it. We are very now well aware of what the applicants are looking for. I would say by some of the questioning here on parking, is it a marina, is it not a marina? Hours of operation? We have the nine points that we're supposed to kind of go through. I don't know what the planning commission members feel or not feel. I'm sure everybody would like to get to an end result of this. Do we want to digest this till next month and, or another suggestion? Because at this point, I think we have the information we need to make a decision in front of us, whether it's what they, as the applicants totally want or something in between. Rod's company has given us different alternatives. I mean, even like the boating, I know they got all their permits and they say, you know, you can more up to four, but we as the planning commission in Lake Township, that is a, what is it called? Blue water area for kayak, canoes and everything else. I think we probably have a responsibility to balance this all the way around. And I for one, I'm not quite sure I have my thoughts totally straight to make.
No. In my mind, I think the, the wall parking is better.
Mm-hmm.
Well, even if you raft it off, you know, two boats or.
Maybe not four, maybe two, I don't know.
Right now, there's docks that stick out there and they probably stick out, you know, it's actually, it's going to make it look cleaner.
I don't disagree with that, but I'm concerned about the four.
Well, that's on, that's just on the one side. It's not where most of the access is.
Still got to deal with it.
Yeah.
Kathy, may I say something about that?
Not right now. Hold on, sorry, not right now. I'm asking or polling or however you want to phrase it, what the commissioner members feel. You're going to have to talk louder.
Is it going to make a much of difference for the applicant if we approve the restaurant tonight or next month?
We could ask that. Whether we disapprove their restaurant tonight and come back on January, I'm going to propose, which would be January, hold on a second, let me get my dates. Like the 22nd? Oh, excuse me, January 22nd would be the next date. That's a good question.
I think that, you know, that would be acceptable, you know, in terms of the restaurant approval. I, I know it's a regular principal land use, so as Rod said, there's not really much to, you know, as long as it, but I, you know, to go through, you know, and change all the plans to that and then come back with that and then see if there's special land use, you know, that's, 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 you know, it's $900 every time I got to make 14.
We know there's costs involved.
Yeah.
I'm just.
So, yeah, the question, the question is, are you comfortable?
Yes.
With the planning commission holding off on the approval of just the restaurant so that they can consider everything together? Or do you want them to take action on the restaurant tonight?
There you go.
Because if, if, you know, that's something that's a principal permitted use.
What do you recommend?
This is your applicant, this is your project. You just pointed out to us, if you just do the restaurant, you're going to have to submit all these and then come back in January.
You're going to revise your plans.
And revise all your plans. Okay? If you want to see how this is going to play out with a special land use, that will be January 22nd. And that will give everybody here time. I mean, I agree with Tom, I mean, to save you as an applicant cost factor, it would probably make more sense to wait until January 22nd. But that's, you know, it's definitely a permitted use. The restaurant is a permitted use. So it's a special land use, is that I think the rest of us are trying to figure out how to either approve all, none, or in between.
Right.
So, and it's not just me, it appears to be a few of us who are saying the same thing, so. Definitely not trying to hold any of them.
I think we should wait then, Kathy, on that. Because I don't want to change all the plans.
I didn't think you would, but we're giving you.
I appreciate you giving us that option. You know, the one thing, you know, in terms of the kayaks, they don't come through that south pond there where the four boat, four boats are, I just wanted to make sure that's clear. The kayaks don't come through that area.
They kind of go where they want. I mean, it's a, my differentiation is.
There's gates.
There's enough off.
There's gates in the water.
Okay. There's still going to be people around there, so.
You also.
Yeah, there's still going to be people going around.
It's 150 feet wide there though in that canal.
And I'm not going to argue with you, that's fine. I get that.
Okay, I just wanted to let you know.
No, I, I understand the gates, I understand, that's not.
It's wider.
Yes, I get, I understand that part of it, so. Okay, so the applicants are going to go with our suggestion to not, like Tom said, maybe just do something with restaurant, we'll just wait till January 22nd and put it all together in one package for you. What is the planning commission members think?
What's that?
Someone would have to make a motion.
Make a motion to reconvene this on January 22nd?
Yes.
Postpone.
Postpone it, postpone it till January 22nd so all the members can get their backs right. We understand it better.
We're closer now.
I think we're much closer, yes. Thank you for resubmitting.
Madam Chair, just to make clear that the applicant is okay with postponing action on the restaurant until that date.
I believe I clarified, but let's try that one more time.
Is that, is that correct? Okay. All right, good.
Is there any request from us now between that and just?
No.
No, I've got everything in front of me.
But let me go back to your motion, please restate it.
You don't change it.
Don't change it. We're going with on the information that we have now. We're all done changing, this is where we're at, so. This is the final. So your motion, please. Please.
Okay, we're going to postpone this till January 22nd with the information that we have on hand, and then we'll make the decision at that time.
With the applicants.
With the applicants. Where'd you write that?
You're just postponing.
You're just postponing until January 22nd.
I second that.
I like Christine.
Oh, you're going to read it.
Motion by Bain, supported by Cozel, to postpone approval of JPC 2018001 Sal U 7317 Dyke Road, 144960119000, with agreement of the applicants to January, to the planning commission's meeting of January 22nd, 2020.
Everyone understand the motion?
Yes.
All right, roll call, please. When do you get done, Rod? He's not here.
Edward Keller.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb, yes. Harold Bain?
Yes.
Mark Borchard?
Yes.
Tom Cozel?
Yes.
Robert Musling?
Yes.
Kathy Schweitzer?
Yes, thank you. All right, it will be on the agenda for January 22nd. At this particular point.
Madam Chair, I just answered one question that was asked earlier.
Yeah.
There was a question asked about what happens, when can you apply for special land use? Your ordinance says that if you, if you were to deny a special land use, an applicant has to wait one year before reapplying for a special land use. I just wanted to answer that question.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay, sorry.
What about this deed thing that we were, letter we were giving today? Should our lawyer look at that?
I can have that happen, yes. There is no more public hearing. We're done with public hearing, so. I thank all the members who have attended over the last numerous months that we've been doing this. At this particular point, we do have more of our agenda to finish for tonight, so if anyone wants to stay, that's great. If you do not want to stay, I'll give you a couple minutes to like vacate this room so we can continue on without interruptions. How's that? Thank you, everyone. Um.
Yeah, I can cut out early.
I was going to come in too. I know.
Early, 11:00, 12:00.
It's up to us.
Oh, jeez, yeah.
You're coming up, just a sec.
You're coming up.
No, you, you have a seat.
No, no.
Have a seat.
Yeah, we did. My tire, huh? That stinks. Did it hold?
No, it's still red.
Okay.
But I got there.
You're fine.
Did it hold? Oh, no. Oh, no.
I'm going to turn the lights back.
I had that happen a couple of years ago. I was down on Island Drive at a friend's house, left there, turned onto, turned onto fruit.
Excuse me?
Like this, you know, I'm like, what the heck just happened here?
That if we deny the special land use, they can't come back for a year.
It's like I've been driving 50 miles.
That's how it works.
It's all tore up and going.
Yeah, so.
His definition of marina, was that by your ordinance or?
Yes.
Your ordinance.
It's an ordinance.
Yeah, it's ordinance.
Are that okay?
You got the Webster one.
We're not doing Webster's, we're doing the ordinance.
That was another thing.
Okay?
If he uses the term marina in there and we approve it that way, does that open the door to?
It's, it'd be another difficulty.
Because he may not own it forever. He might not play football.
And he always uses the word marina.
I know, yes.
A radial tire is L6.
It's more like a, it's more like a public boat.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's a hybrid.
Could I ask the people there at the back of the room to step out of the room so we can continue, please? Thank you. All right, we're going to continue on with our agenda, which is going to take us to item 6C, which is 2020 planning commission dates in our. All right, we're gonna continue on with our agenda, which is going to take us to item 6C, which is 2020 Planning Commission Dates. In our packet, I believe, now that I lost it, is, um, our dates.
Oh.
Oh.
Forgot about that.
Come on, Tom.
Getting with it, catching up here.
Oh, where did it go?
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be fine with them, sure, the dates are the dates.
Do we need to read these and, um, the most important? I think we do.
You need to make a guess, you have to send them.
Yeah. And you need to read them, so. With that understanding, everybody got your dates?
Got it.
How about Keith? Ready?
How about Keith?
Well, you're welcome back, that's all. Don't take a prize.
These days are fine.
Keith, now that you're back.
Or just a little jealous, maybe?
Well, don't work there, we'll make it today.
I'm really anticipating his ZBA report, that's why I wanted to make sure I wrote that. Yeah, you can't wait for that one, now he's coming.
Okay, so we need a motion for these dates. And then we need to read these dates. Anybody care to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd share, I'll make a motion to approve the following dates for planning commission meetings for the year 2020. The dates of January 22nd, February 26th, March 25th, April 22nd, May 27th, June 24th, July 22nd, August 26th, September 23rd, October 28th, November 11th, and December 9th.
I'll second that move.
All right. You don't have another motion sheet?
Yeah, write it on the back.
Just one moment. Wait a minute, you have all our sheets. Why don't you go ahead and make this one? There you go. All right. I'm letting Christine write the motion. So we have it. Are you picking on Whitey's writings?
I would never pick on Whitey's writing.
He's not here to defend himself, you know.
I'm gonna tell him that.
Please do so.
Oh, this is right.
There you go. Want this? You can have mine, please.
What does that mean?
Nothing. Just please. Please and thank you. You wanna borrow mine, we can share. All right, Christine. An motion, you got a second?
No second yet.
I second it.
Harold?
No.
No.
Me. Keith?
Thank you.
Roll call, I guess.
Keith Fell?
Yes.
Mark Borchardt?
Yes.
Harold Bain?
Yes.
Ed Keller?
Yeah.
Robert Muesling?
Yes.
Robert Cozel?
Yep.
Chris Holcomb, yes. Kathy Schweitzer?
Yes, thank you. All right, that takes care of the commission dates. Moving on to item D, which is election of officers. We are missing one officer at the moment, so.
So he'll be in charge.
Huh?
So he'll be in charge.
Can we vote him into an office not being here?
He should.
All right.
He'll be surprised again.
He'll be surprised, yeah. I open elections for secretary, how's that? Nominations, I should say.
I'd like to make a motion that we keep it the same.
I think we have to go through each one separately. We do, we tried to do that last year, we got a coup d'oeuvre.
All right.
Nominate Whitey Simon.
Yeah, second.
Okay. Any others? Closing nominations, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Whitey's our secretary. Moving on to vice chair, opening up the nominations.
Nominate Christine?
I second the motion.
All right. Are you gonna object?
Pretty quick.
No.
She's not gonna object. Any other nominations? No, closing the nominations, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, Christine. Opening up nominations for chairperson.
I'd like to nominate Kathy A. Schweitzer. Second that.
A.
I did that for Whitey.
All right, anybody else?
Second the motion.
I already did.
All right. Um, close nominations, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, everybody. Moving on. Item number seven, unfinished business. I don't see anything under there, so, we're gonna go, okay, under item eight, planning consultant report, master plan. Eric?
So we finalized the statistications portion. Provide that to, um, to read. I just don't actually think, um, specifically if there's any things that, anything that we're not agreeing, that are ongoing.
An alternate plan for the ferry?
Yeah. Can we make it more, more like present?
We need it sooner than that.
Oh, we don't wanna talk about it.
Oh, gosh.
And it's based on your current plan, so it's, it should be.
Are you gonna submit it?
You're gonna get, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna email you a copy of it next week.
Okay.
Okay, because we're just doing some last minute formatting. We're gonna email you a copy of that, then you'll have over the holidays in your spare time.
Can you, can you email it to me too? I have a, we have a board meeting on the 11th.
Absolutely. I mean to, I mean to everybody.
Oh, okay, all right.
Everyone's gonna get it. It's about 40 pages, there's lots of images and maps, so it won't be, should be, uh.
I know there was an inquiry from the township board, Mark would probably know this, about having another joint meeting. I was not looking for January, just because of everything else we have going. I was thinking maybe February might be a better one. But if they can have the information, when you say everybody's gonna get it, do you mean township board so they can see what you, the 40 pages?
We want you to look at it before you're ready.
But he wants to see it before.
But you're a member, so.
Right, I'm not gonna release it.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think you need to look at it, we wanna make sure you're comfortable with it. And once you're comfortable with that draft, then yes, then it would be available for wider distribution.
Okay, and you understand that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Perfect. Okay, thanks for the clarification.
It's, it's as clear as the, uh, blue horseshoe, whatever that looks like.
It should be downright clear, downright clear then, yeah, okay. Any other consultant report?
Um, the other thing that will be coming to you soon as well for your, hopefully for the January meeting, start talking about goals and objectives. So that's gonna be, um, goals and objectives for your master plan.
Okay.
So that's, that's the next step before we actually start working on the plan chapters.
Okay.
That's in February?
That will be coming for your January meeting, at least for you to see. You may not take action then, but you'll have.
We have a lot of reading to do for January. Okay. Anything else from the planners? All right, hearing nothing, I am anxiously waiting the number nine ZBA representatives' report.
Okay, the ZBA representative's report. We're having a problem with the boathouses, because they wanna give a special deal to the boathouses. They're, they're calling it a hardship. And I told them that we're renegotiating and re-going through the ordinance itself, but they wanna grant hardship permits for boathouses. And according to the way I read the ordinance is, a lot of these boathouses should've never even been built in the first place.
So that's the purpose of the joint meeting is?
Right.
To let the, the planning commission here, what the ZBA is seeing, it might not be aware of.
Well, we've already tabled one for that, cause I told them that we're in the midst of changing the ordinance on it, so we're waiting to see. Right. Right, because the way Clay Township does their, the front of their houses is, most of these boathouses are in the front yards, basically. And I think that either we need to change the which, with, actually the definition of the front of your house or some of the other ordinances that go along with it. Because I lived on South Channel and I was granted a boathouse and it was in my front yard. I never put it up, but I was granted a permit for it and I couldn't understand, how can you grant me a permit for a boathouse that's in my front yard? Plus, you can't have no covered boathouses. So, we're, we really gotta look into that.
Enclosed boathouse.
Yeah, enclosed, totally.
Cover you can, enclosed.
Right, enclosed. They give you a three foot.
Yeah.
But that needs to be really, and we're working on it, I know we are.
Well, and I, I think that's one reason for the joint meeting is to, because this is a very, seems to be a very, um, important topic that's current and getting input, getting everybody together to hear.
Right, cause. Some of these boathouses are as big as houses. I mean, 4,000, 6,000 square feet boathouses, I mean.
Sure.
And where I'm located, where Harold used to be located, the front yard, they consider the road, not the river.
Right, and everybody assumes the river is the front of the house, but it's really not.
At least in this jurisdiction.
Right.
Back in the day, when the roads weren't there, it was.
You got it.
Yes. We've changed a little, haven't we? We do have motorized vehicles.
That's why I love them canals, they're highways.
Yeah, they are, especially on the island. Anything else from the ZBA?
Big concern is the boathouses.
Okay. Number 10, thank you. Number 10 is board representatives' report.
I'll make it quick, nothing to report.
Well, thank you. Uh, number 11 is chairperson's report. I do have, I'm gonna have this to your planners, Cindy was kind enough to kinda pull together some of the stuff we've talked about over the last year. I don't know if Matt or Rod, did you get this? You might wanna take a look at it, maybe we can, um. Yeah.
It'll, it'll somewhere, it'll probably contain a lot of that, um, that'll give you a pass for what you wanna talk to me about.
Correct. Okay. Okay. Maybe I'll see if we can get that to you and that way we can combine our efforts so we can make it, um, more concise and go from there. So, um, that's all I have. Number 12 is planning commission member comments. Anybody?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Rod, why, why can't we, uh, put something in there for an alternate way off the island?
Right.
At least two. At least two, at least two ways off to Harson's Island. We are right now, we can't get on or off the island with any motorized vehicle, only foot traffic only. And this should've been looked at. I know it was put in the planning, uh, master plan years back, but I think it needs to be revised now and brought to the forefront, cause we are having so many ferry issues. And this just doesn't affect Harson's Island, this actually affects the whole Clay Township.
Yeah.
As a whole.
And outside businesses.
Yeah, I mean, most of the businesses now, they can't get deliveries, your packages aren't gonna be delivered unless they hand deliver them.
They can't get their goods off the island.
And they say it's gonna be up and running tomorrow. I looked at the docs, you're not up and running by tomorrow, it's not gonna happen.
That's something you can look at in your past.
Yeah, we.
I always refer to existing conditions, you don't look at the future plan.
Right, right, yes.
Yes, that's something you can look at.
We need to in, involve that, we need more than just one way on and off the island now. For, I think, cause St. Susie basically is, is stagnant because
Yep.
of the way we're, the way we're set up right now.
Yep.
We have no true actual, in the wintertime, ice flows. And now we have a, a maintenance issue, so you're kinda like dead in the water over there.
Not to mention cost.
Yeah, the cost, just the cost alone. And what is it really costing us in business-wise? Tourism.
You get people go there once.
Yeah.
They go, oh, I'm paying that again.
You spend $12 to go across.
Well, it, it's not even that, you come over there and people, you want people to come and visit, you want, you know, your. You got my point.
Any other members' comments?
I wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we won't be back together, will we?
It's my annual.
It's her annual, say so, I was waiting for it. Thank you. All right, item number 13 is public comments, this would be your opportunity that I know you've been waiting for.
A chance for that.
Please state your name and address again.
Thank you very much, and I'm sorry about the confusion earlier when she read the rules.
That's okay.
I was like, oh, that guest, I better start paying attention. Again, thank you for granting me your audience. I know that, um, you know, my appearing before you is kind of off-topic and maybe slightly out of your jurisdiction or related area of expertise and reach. However, um, there's a group of us on Harson's Island that have gotten together on a couple of occasions and we wanted to, uh, reach out to every department, every, um, committee and, um, and every commission. In Clay Township, we're looking for help. We're looking for your input, guidance, and any information that you may have that would aid the residents of Harson's Island and Clay Township in gaining some oversight and regulation to protect the residents, guests, and visitors to Harson's Island from the dangers and the abuses that are put forth by the existing people running the ferry. Today was a perfect example of what lack of oversight and regulation does to a community. Harold made it here by having to stand on an icy deck of a ferry pitching rolling over a rough river and walking across the gangplank to get onto mainland, and, and that's ridiculous. Um, my children and my wife and one of our dogs were stranded, were homeless tonight. I've got pets at home. Fortunately, I was able to contact somebody to take care of my pets at home. But, um, we're really looking for some, for some help. And Harold, thank you for bringing to the attention that the, um, master plan should include, uh, something as far as transportation on and off of the island alternatives. We would also like to see that the Harson's Island Transportation Authority be put back into, into operation. We know that it has been sort of disbanded, um, for reasons that don't make any sense to any of the residents on the island. I know I only have a few minutes, um, but I, I did wanna bring that to your attention and, uh, and if you guys have any information that you can share with us on direction that we may need to take to get some sort of oversight and regulation, uh, we would appreciate it. I'll share my email with you guys after this is over, if you'd like, and, uh, hopefully we can follow up in the future. I know you're not required to say anything now, so I won't hold you to anything.
Walk away from it.
Well, thank you for your comments, appreciate you spending the time here.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other, you too, any other?
Gary, Internet, same address as before, I just have a procedural comment. At the end of that blue island, the, the secretary read, according to my notes, that it would be postponed to approve the submission. I think it should've said, that's why I asked if I could ask a question, that it'd be postponed to take action on it. Because otherwise, if you say approved, then there's a predetermination that the submission's gonna be approved.
We weren't trying to do that. Postpone approval, that's how she read it.
Yeah, postpone approval, that. I think action is a better, but that's just my comment as a lawyer.
I don't know if we can really change that at this point.
Yeah, you could, you could make up some, the person who made the motion, the motion.
With them, not in.
You can make the motion the night of the meeting.
Right, the night of the meeting.
Right.
The next.
No, tonight.
You have to do it tonight.
Tonight.
Do it tonight.
Right.
Give it to us, they can read it, just change the word. Hey, Harold.
Hold on, Harold.